Hi, I'm the funny black sheep game along with a few other people. So one of the thing, one of our big things that we do every year, sometimes you know on a off election here is rather small, but sometimes it's rather large. So we have four candidates here with us today and they're running for the at-large seat. Mike Griffith.
Everybody.
District one, Randy Mormon and district three. We have two of the three candidates that have filed here today. Rebecca Levison and Nathan Mudd. Aaron Scott has let me know that he is out of town. And as of, I checked the website yesterday, these are still the only candidates that have filed to run. I would guess that there will be a few more by mid-August, but I. So the rules are each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves and present their ideas of how they want to make a difference for Arvada and its residents. The moderator will then ask three questions, which each candidate will have the opportunity to answer. They have received these three questions ahead of time. After those questions are asked and answered, the moderator will be, will pose questions submitted on cards, either that were written out ahead of time, or if you kind of come up with a question and want to raise your hand, somebody will bring you a card. Please make sure your name and email address is on there because I will share those questions that don't get asked with the candidates and hopefully they will have time to respond to you individually. So, and then with Zoom, any attended, attendance on Zoom, please put your question in the chat. So I am going to start with Michael. He's got his three minutes and please pay attention to Pat. She is our ace timekeeper.
Hi, everybody. I'm honored to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to tell you about this candidacy and I appreciate all the time and all the effort that you do in our community. It's amazing that it's been about 10 years that the APA has been doing such hard work. So I just wanted to say I really appreciate that. My name is Mike Griffith. I'm running for the at-large seat. That's the whole city, the Arvada City Council. I've been a long time resident and a long time volunteer with the city. I currently chair the Arvada Planning Commission. I also chair the Board of Adjustment and I'm on a couple of other boards and committees as well. All that to say, I'm very involved and very interested in my community. I'm a dad, a father of three kids. My oldest is seven, my youngest is one and my middle child is four. So a lot of things going on. My engineering background is in roadway design and mixed-use development. I've been doing some of that work in all over the front range, some of it in the city of Arvada as well. I believe in sustainable development and there's a couple of things that really drive me. But the biggest thing and the reason why I'm running is because Arvada has been, become painfully unaffordable. I moved here in 2014 and I thought we paid too much for our house and we were going to be underwater for the rest of our lives. And I'm here to tell you that our house was less than half the price of the cheapest house that's now available in Arvada and it's only been 10 years. The big reason that I think we see these price increases that are specifically affecting Arvada is that we're getting very close to becoming a bedroom community, meaning that most of the people that work here can't afford to live here, so they have to commute in. And most of the people that live here work somewhere else, just as we heard earlier. And this actually creates two problems. One, obviously we have a growing homeless problem because we can't afford to live here and work here and all that. But it also creates a lot of strain on our roads. People complain about roads. It's the number one issue in all the community surveys and they don't understand that that's actually coming from our housing problem. So if we can address the housing and make sure that we have good jobs and affordable prices for homes here, we can actually help lower the impact on our roads. If we do that, we're also lowering our greenhouse gas emissions, we're lowering our air particulates. We're doing all sorts of things at once. So affordability is huge for me and as you'll hear, I have areas of expertise that I'd like to share with you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Running for district one.
Thank you, Joyce, and thank you all for having us here today. And I'm so happy to see you all. It's so important that you're involved in our local government. And I think our fellow candidates, Mike and Rebecca and Nathan, because I know what it takes to step forward and to put your name in the hat and, and run. And it takes, it takes a lot of sacrifice, so thank you all for being here. My name is Randy Mormon and I'm running for reelection for district one. I currently serve as mayor pro tempore of the city of Arvada. And four years ago, I stood before you, well, wait, actually I sat behind a screen because we were all on Zoom four years ago, remember that? And I made a commitment to you that I would bring new leadership to our city council and I committed that I would stand up for our shared values. Well, I'm proud to say that we've made some significant accomplishments over these past four years. I just want to call out some of those. We created a housing advisory committee and we also have passed a housing strategic plan. We hired our first sustainability coordinator and now we're on our second. But I advocated strongly that we would get a staff person dedicated to sustainability in our city. And then we are on our way to passing our first climate action plan. Also, we've opened over 100 affordable units already in our city in these past couple of years. And there's 400 more to come in the next couple of years that are already in planning and have been approved in development. So those are huge accomplishments that, you know, speak to the work that myself and other council members have done over the past couple of years. Of course, our work is not done. Today, I am making a recommitment to you as I run for reelection. I promise to do more. And my first priority is to enhance the quality of life for all residents. I mean, all means all. That includes our unhoused, that includes our immigrant community, that includes trans, that includes our youth and our seniors, everybody. Every in Arvada should have the same opportunity to live, work and thrive in our city. And so I am very dedicated to that. And what does that look like? Well, I think we need to do more to identify and address inequities and discrimination. And that starts with actually having an advisor, a resident advisory committee dedicated to looking at that. So I commit to you to keep working on getting that done. We also need to continue to work on affordable housing, of course, as, as Mike spoke to. Improve access to multi-mobile transportation and make our city more accessible to all. Of course, some of you know, my husband has a disability from a stroke. And so accessibility is, is really important to me. Next, we have to come up with sustainable long-term solutions for finding homes and supporting our unhoused residents. And so I commit to you that we will get a 24/7 shelter in North Jeffco. And I'm working very hard on that right now. And of course, we have to pass our climate action plans, so working on that. And I'll just close with a quote. I just got back from a tour of Ireland and Scotland and our choir sang a song that put John Lewis's words that we just heard about, "Good Trouble." It says, "This day has come for us to make good trouble, to make good trouble, to make good trouble. This day has challenged us to make good trouble, to make this world a better place. And I want to make good trouble with you all. I want to make Arvada a better place."
Hello, thank you so much, Joyce, for putting this together and it's great to see all of you. My name is Rebecca Levison. That's Rebecca with a C-K. And I am running to lead the conversations that shape our community and to make decisions with you. I actually adore all the behind-the-scenes work, everything from our water pumps to our zoning and streetlights. I truly enjoy learning about all of this and I've got the energy and time to put aside to make sure that the information at our meetings or at city council meetings is shared with the community. I am led by my core values of bravery, growth and reliability. With bravery, I grew up in a family where we passed around the topics of religion and politics, like mashed potatoes. So I'm very comfortable with talking about things and we had a lot of conflicting views. And I think it's incredibly important to hold space for conflicting views because that is where we find the middle ground. That is where we see the big picture and that's where we can be creative and innovative. The other one would be growth. So I am a problem solver and I say, "Bring it on to a four-hour meeting about water treatment. Let me do the spark notes for you." I really enjoy this and I hope you'll see that my passion comes across. And off of that as well, I think with growth and bravery, it's also doing things like this. Standing up and setting an example for our youth and showing them what's possible and showing the community that when we don't agree with what's happening nationally, get local, get involved. Reliability, I show up. If I say I'm going to be somewhere, I will be there. I may have my two and a half-year-olds in tow, but I will, I will be there if I, if I say I will be there. And I think that's so important. And when we're representing, we are, we need to know what we're representing. So a huge part of my campaign is building that bridge between what's going on at city council meetings, what do residents want to see in the community, what is important to you? And then holding space like coffee, happy hours, somewhere we can have a conversation and it's not three to five minutes with no response. So we're really building from that and then having those conversations together. And then with all that, we need you, speak up, stand up, show up. I'm listening and to be involved and to represent you, I need to know what, what I'm representing. So I want to hear from you. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, I'm Nathan Mudd. I'm also running for city council of Arvada, district three. Thank you all for hosting this awesome, awesome event. I'm going to start by saying, one of you guys talked about the No Kings. I've been to a lot of different rallies, protests or whatever over the years. That was the coolest one we've ever had in Arvada. I brought my son, one of my son's friends, my wife. It was, it was all of it. You guys, it was, it was awesome. So thanks for, thanks for doing that. I am still shocked that we did that here in Arvada. So good work to all of us, but you guys for putting that on. So I've been a resident of Arvada, little intro about me. I've been a resident of Arvada for a little over 20 years. I've lived in the same house in Old Town, Arvada. It's actually the longest place I've ever lived in my life is right there in Old Town. I came to Colorado after studying environmental policy in undergrad. I got my environmental masters in law and policy here in Colorado. That didn't seem to scratch the itch, so I became an environmental lawyer, graduated from the University of Denver. And then I realized, when you graduate with that degree, they're training you to go work for the gas companies. They're training you to work and they are not training you to work on what I think is the good side of it. So we didn't have a farmer's market in Old Town. So I said, okay, went to a lot of different organizations, tried to get one, tried to say, hey, could you guys do this? Can, nobody wanted to. So they said, why don't you? So I did it and then I realized with my wife, we've been running the Arvada Farmer's Market. Started it 17 years ago. And I realized it is the convergence of all the things we truly care about. It's environment, it's local jobs, it's local economy. It's been, it has been quite the journey. And from being a lawyer to that was a, well, it was more of a shock to my old bosses than it was to me, but it's been, it's been an amazing thing. From there, I became an organic farmer for five years, starting in 2017, through a public-private partnership with the city of Brighton. We actually lived on the farm part-time. That was amazing. It was an educational farm. We really focused on healthy eating, getting food and education out to the community and all over to all of our different, different folks. We also, okay, 30 seconds. So I've also served on the Arvada Chamber of Commerce. I was the vice chair until I announced that I was running for city council. I believe in healthy food leads to healthy families, leads to healthy communities and also strengthens our, our local economy. I'm accessible. I love to talk in person. I can talk on the phone, texting and email. I don't get the intonations. I am available. Come see me Saturdays in Westminster, Sundays in Arvada, and I will be there to talk to you guys. Thanks so much for having us here today.
Thank you all. The next part is asking the questions that they have received already. They have 90 seconds to respond and we're going to start with Nathan and tell them this. So the first question is, cities have written ordinances to increase the Colorado minimum wage within their city limits. What is your position on Arvada doing this?
Okay, so we have to have living wages. It is so expensive and I think it's about, is it 1571 right now? Is what Denver is, is that right? No, Denver's 18, we're 15. Other communities, we follow the state. Other communities have a patchwork. We actually really need to make sure that we are bringing everybody up. Personally, I understand that $15 and change is not enough for folks to live on. All of my employees, all the people that work with us, the minimum they start at is $22, all the way up to 35, that's our starting. And we still can't keep the people for a year or two years because they've got to go find something else. It also impacts who we get to live in the community. We've talked about housing. I think Arvada has tackled a lot of tough issues. I don't see why our, our leadership can't tackle this as well. We have to create a community where people can live, work and play. And without more money, it's really tough to live, work or play in, in Arvada, especially in the Old Town area as well. So Rebecca.
The minimum wage, I know that one all too well. Previously a bartender and that's below minimum wage if you're not getting enough for tips. I also didn't have health insurance till I married my husband and that is a problem. So I think there's this holistic side as well to not just raising the minimum wage, but raising the standard for how we treat our workers. With that said, my current position, if it was to come through, would be a no, not yet. But let's get there. I think a couple of things to think about would also be our outdated infrastructure. If we raise our wage and we're not, and we're just doing it, we're not doing it regionally, we're going to get an influx of a lot of, a lot of new folks coming into Arvada and we need to be ready for that. So that water treatment, let me tell you, I could use an upgrade. It's been a while. That and just making sure we're prepared for the risk that could put on small businesses when we ask them to raise the, the wage. And finally, the chance that we could have a local inflation, very focused locally. Denver is doing it, so let's watch Denver. Let's see what they are doing. Let's learn from them and let's move forward with it as a regional strategy. We've got our 10-year comprehensive plan coming up, so let's include it in that. Let's plan for that. So it's a no now, but let's work our way towards that. And if you want the raises, the wage, wages raised, I want to hear from you. Your input matters and having that built from the community is such a key factor. Thank you.
I support increasing the minimum wage and I think though it's going to take a lot of work. I have, the current minimum wage is 1481, that's the state level set. Obviously that is not nearly enough for anyone to live in Arvada. And we've talked about already how important it is that people are living and working here and able to afford to live here. I think though it's going to take a lot of work and we do need to do it regionally. We need to look at our county and our counties, both Jefferson and Adams in particular, and our neighboring municipalities. And how do we approach this regionally so that it's an even playing field for all businesses that are working in the same economic space? That's really important. I think it's extremely important that we are working with our business community. We don't want the cost of doing business to be so high that then we lose the economic opportunity that we're trying to protect and grow. So it's going to be a long, hard conversation, but we need to have it now.
I don't want to knock you out, but if you hold your applause, tell me and then with the grid.
All right, no applause for Mike, that's a plan. All right. So I was happy to see this as a question we were going to talk about in person because I'd certainly love to gauge how folks feel, the expressions that I see. So yeah, absolutely support raising the minimum wage in our city. If we can get that done, we can put it out to the voters and we can get a yes on that. I think that would be great. However, if we raise it to what Denver's minimum wage is right now, it is $18, that would still not get us anywhere where we need to be for affordable housing and to afford to live in our city. So yes, however, we have to look at some other things where we can make it easier to, to live and to have a good, meaningful existence in Arvada so people don't have to go elsewhere and just come in for work. One of the things I would suggest, and I'm speaking about affordable housing here, is we look at what it costs to build in Arvada right now? And what are the limitations that make it difficult to deliver affordable housing products? One of the reasons that you don't see small footprint homes in Arvada, like bungalows and post-war houses, like the old housing stock that we probably like to be available. One, they're mostly being held by seniors that have nowhere else to live. Two, they're not building it because the tap fee for a McMansion is the same as the tap fee for a small footprint house. So I just want to put that out there that there are things we can do to create a policy framework environment that will yield the products that we're trying to see in the housing market. And that might make that minimum wage increase mean more for, for actual people on a daily basis. Thank you.
Second question, and Rebecca will go first this time. I went to several meeting retreats with the potential city managers and there was always this kind of allusion to the fact that there is a budget crisis coming. And my question is, what ideas do you have to address a budget shortfall?
Perfect, thank you so much. And standing up. So first of all, budgeting is in my blood. My grandfather was an accountant. My dad has binders full of everything in the basement. And now I do the budget in my basement with my husband. So I'm very familiar with looking at the money and I'm excited to look at it as well. Just about as excited as I am about water pumps. And with that said, we do not currently have a shortfall. We had a lot with Candela's where we got a big boost and that boost has stopped. So that's one thing to notice and we need planning, not to panic. So we got a plan, don't panic. And we've got that comprehensive plan coming up so we can figure out where do we want to spend. We also, towards the end of this year, will be renewing the yearly budget, which is done every two years, so we can look at that as well. And, and one thing I see is let's reevaluate our expenses. What are we doing now we no longer need? Where can we streamline? Where do we need to connect with people? And if we're giving them money, make sure that there's maybe some strings attached so that, that we can really spend the money wisely. And I think the final thing was budgets can build trust if they're done right and we need to spend smarter so that you don't pay more.
Thank you.
Just quick, yeah, push it.
Can you hear me? Yes. Success. As Rebecca said, we don't currently have a budget shortfall. We are predicted at the end of this year to have a fund balance of 242 million. So that, that is healthy for now, but when we look at our 10-year forecasts, which we are so appreciative that our accounting department does for us, our financial director, we are seeing that around 2030, we're going to start to see that, that fund balance start to decrease significantly. In fact, in 2023, we'll see our parks department actually have a, excuse me, in 2032, we will see our parks department actually have a deficit. So that is very concerning. So now is the time that we need to do, I'm looking at three things that we need to do. One is we need to do a lot, be a lot better at budgeting and being really smart at our current budget. And what I mean by that is that, you know, every year we approve these budgets and each department makes a case for the amount of money they need and they need to spend. What we find is that often at the end of the year, they don't spend all of that money. And so what that means is during that budget process, we are withholding projects because we don't have the funds to do those projects. So we need to look and see, well, where are we not spending money? Where we have, maybe we're supposed to hire a certain number of employees and they don't all get hired. How can we use that fund, that money to spend on our priority projects? The second thing is we need to look at our reserves. We have a very healthy reserve and I think we should go back and look at the Great Recession and see how much money that we needed to make through that and then reevaluate how much we're setting aside in our reserves because I think there's some cushion there that we could start spending on again on those priority projects. And finally, the last thing is we need to grow our economic base. And that's, you know, investing in growing businesses here because that is, that tax basis is the, is the, really the root of our economic success.
Okay, council member Randy mentioned a lot of the things that are going on. So I'm going to see what's left on the table to discuss here. Certainly appreciate that. Our budgets at the city are pretty complicated. We have over 700 employees. Our annual spend is about $380 million. We are not a small organization. Enterprise funds, where we basically get money from the golf course. We have to spend back on the golf course. That sucks up about $200 million. So we have lots of money coming in and out. And Randy's right, there is a projected shortfall with some of the departments that's coming up. Currently, we're in the black, but one thing to keep in mind is the inflationary environment has created instability. And I can't really underscore how important it is to keep an eye on inflation when we look at our tax revenue. So most of the money that the city takes in is from tax revenue, sales tax. A smaller amount of it is actually from your, your property tax. So that, that, we don't get a whole lot of property tax. Oh, year over year, we've actually increased on our sales tax revenue, but it hasn't kept up with inflation. And so that's where, even though we have money in reserves in most of our departments, we're going to start to erode that. So one of the things that I would mention is an option is we don't want to go completely flat on some of these surpluses that we have. So we need to start looking and planning at what we can do with taxes, if we can get support for increasing taxes. It's hard sell, but what is, what are people going to get out of it? The other thing is bond programs. Bond programs got us a Ralston Road improvements, it got us bike lanes, it got us 72nd. You tell somebody specifically, hey, we're going to fix this aspect of our community and it's going to cost money, do you support it? Give them a chance to vote on it. Thank you.
I mean, they did cover most of everything that goes on with this, but I will, I will say, we have the have-tos, the stuff that we are statutorily obligated to do. And then we've got the want-tos. We've got the fun things, the things that a lot of us really care about, whether we have something near and dear, mine's, mine's local food, obviously. And you know, there's the environmental programs. We do have to take tough looks at some of those and decide which of those programs are going to be minimized? What, what truly is the priority? And we, as future city council folks, we have to have the input of everybody telling us, you know, what, what is your most important priority? Because every human comes with their most important priority. One of the best ways that we can increase that besides what Mike was talking about with our citizens saying, yes, increase our sales tax, is making sure that our businesses remain healthy and then our businesses are bringing in as much sales tax revenue as they can for us. Okay, 30 seconds. And so there are cities out there that don't focus on bringing in people at all. They just focus on bringing in businesses and they're really, they're really healthy as far as their numbers go, but it's not the greatest communities to live in. I want to make sure that Arvada is still like that and we are still a great place to live. And again, I think the best way is citizens telling us, yes, go for it and making sure our businesses remain healthy.
Thank you, Nathan, I'm sorry. And Randy now? So our third question that they got in advance is, what is the cause or need that you wish the city could address successfully?
Homelessness. And this is something I'm very passionate about. You know, the late President Jimmy Carter said, "The measure of a society is found in not how they treat their, it is founded how they treat their weakest and most helpless citizens." I believe that by helping our most vulnerable, we're going to improve the lives of everyone. So our homeless population has grown quite significantly over the past couple of years, as you all know and I think are very well aware of. I think the last point in time count showed us last year, we had 293 unhoused individuals. We know from all our service providers, it's much higher than that. I am proud to say and excited to see the work that's happening right now with our navigators, our two navigators in the suburban studios work. It's very exciting. And if you haven't read about it, there's a nice short blurb in the Arvada report, so please check that out. But of course, there's a lot more work to do. And I mentioned in my opening remarks that we need to have a 24/7 low-barrier emergency shelter in northern Jefferson County. I am excited by the fact that the recent conversations we've had with the county and our neighboring municipalities, we are working on intergovernmental agreement to financially support the severe weather shelter finally. So that is very exciting and I'm excited to see that move forward for this coming winter. And my hope is the goodwill from that can be used then to start to talk about intergovernmental agreement for a shelter.
And Michael?
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to answer this question. I absolutely agree with Randy. I think that we absolutely need to look at homelessness in Arvada. It is a significant issue and I would say it is the top issue that I think we have to deal with before we solve anything else. One thing I wanted to mention or ask a question, we'll make this interactive. How many of you have attended a city council meeting? All right, cool. How many of you have volunteered at Mission Arvada? Come on, guys. All right. If you can go to a city council meeting, you can go talk. All right. If you can go to a city council meeting, you can go talk to Karen and her folks and volunteer. They need help. They do a lot with what they have. I've been in there up toward their facility. It's absolutely amazing. I'm here to tell you that I love what they're doing, but they cannot be relied upon to completely solve this issue. So in my opinion, I think 24/7 shelter is something that I would absolutely be interested in looking further into. Randy and I were both in attendance for the homeless forum that was in, I think, earlier in the spring at the Standing Lake Library that he was talking about. That was a great forum to try and figure out what the future looks like across the front range. But what I'd say is, in a very real sense, I don't want to see someone scraped off the sidewalk in the middle of winter. And if we can't figure out a cold weather emergency shelter, then we're really up shit creek on getting a 24/7 shelter in Arvada. So I want to see that happen. That is a top priority for me. Thank you for the opportunity to answer the question, answer it.
And then now Nathan.
You guys are both absolutely right. I mean, that's, that's the most pressing issue, I think, that we see, especially in our district, District 3, right in Old Town Arvada. It is the most pressing issue. I'm not going to reiterate what you guys have said. I'm going to talk about the issue that's nearest and dearest to my heart. And if you guys haven't gotten that by now, it's local food because of what it does for our local economy. We have the, we have had the opportunity in the past, we've done something called double up food bucks with SNAP, where we accept SNAP at the farmer's market. We can enhance this program through many groceries, grocery stores and small food stores as well. Where their food dollars, the SNAP dollars become doubled up through a program through Livwell, Colorado. In the city of Arvada, I have never gotten support from the actual city apparatus or from Jefferson County in order to implement that. You guys have done it one time. It cost us about $15,000 a year to implement this. It is not cheap. I can't pay for it myself. Do you know who gave us the grant? It was Boulder County. So I think that the city should really help in, in doing that. We should, we should make it a priority. And I don't think it's going to be something that the city has to pay for. Again, it also, if people eat well, they have better mental health, they have better overall health. I think it's a really high priority for me and I think it should be for our city as well.
That is a big question. And I think there's many causes we can come behind. For me personally, the, the two biggest ones would be homeless and housing. And I say them together because they are interconnected. What I'm seeing is we have these big issues, but as a community, we're not all coming to that common agenda. So I think we need to address that, the how we're going to get to some of this. And I see three interconnected priorities to get to the navigation center, to, to get to a more engaged and connected community. The first is raising the standard of leadership. Disagreements are healthy. They are necessary. But once a decision is made on city council, all of city council should respect that decision and stand up as a team for one another. My parents debated, they, they argued, but if I asked my dad, he said, what did your mom say? If I asked my mom, she said, what did your dad say? And that kind of unification, even if you don't completely agree, is such a huge part of it. Showing as leaders that are leading confidently. The second is to expand civic participation. We need volunteers at the navigation center or at the mission. And that will help with that common agenda. And the third one is to follow our, our mission and vision of the city to dream big and deliver. And I think it's that deliver piece that we really need to work on. So let's do it. And yes, housing, homelessness and how we get there.
Okay, now comes some hard work there. Quick question. So gonna start with this one. And Mike gets to go first.
I'm standing up.
Given the federal pullback of clean energy incentives and removing regulations for clean air, what do you think the city can do to step in and fill the gaps?
Oh, all right, cool. I know this one. So we, we actually just had a city council meeting last week on Tuesday, where we introduced to city council the final draft of the transportation master plan. Something the city has been investing in for over two years. Along with 70 big projects and $700 million worth of investment for 20 years and all the big things, right? There was an initial recommendation, let's fix our signal timing.
Yeah.
Dear Lord. No, we don't clap. All right. So if we fix our signal timing, it'll do a couple of things. One, we don't actually have to rip out any infrastructure to do this. We just have to do a study that says where our deficiencies are and where can we increase or decrease time to make more platooning happen? And that means if you're going the speed limit, you don't hit more than one red light. Wouldn't that be nice? So we can do that because now we've done the study. We have the data. We have the recommendations. The next step would be for city council and staff to go ahead and move forward with the first round of testing. So if we can do that, what happens when you platoon, you stop less, it takes 150% more energy to start the car again and get moving than it does to keep going. Also, the thing that causes most respiratory infection and asthma is actually particulates in the atmosphere from brake dust and tires, not necessarily greenhouse gas emissions. But we reduce both if we fix the signal timing. Thank you.
All right. All right. I think I'll change it up a little bit and Randy will be next.
I'm next. Oh, I didn't know that was changing it up. Okay. Um, I totally agree with, with some of the comments from Michael and I would say that, you know, I'm very excited and Darlon and I have been with the advisory committee, been working very hard on this climate action plan. And I think, you know, we're taking the view that this is long term. It's longer than these four years. And so our hope is that if we can get a plan passed by this council that says we need to make these investments in clean energy and electrification and infrastructure and composting, that we can find some funding now and that's what this plan is going to start to prioritize is whether the small things we can do now with the available funds now. And then also keep on out for those longer term goals. And I think there's an opportunity also for us to look more at public-private partnerships. And how can we utilize those to achieve some of our, our climate goals? And, and I would say then also, you know, Michael talked about transportation planning and land use planning, that stuff we can do now. We're going to be revising our building codes in the next year. We can be updating that so that we are then making requirements for when new buildings are built, that they are electrified, that they are set up to use geothermal, using solar, those kinds of things we can be doing now in our building codes, again, setting us up for the future. So we may have a little bit of a setback right now and it feels daunting. We have to realize that it, we, there's going to be a shining spot coming up soon at the end of the tunnel. So we're looking forward to that. We need to be planning for that as well.
A great question. I personally am committed to this as a beekeeper and a mother. I care deeply about clean air, healthy soil and a thriving environment. And I see two key areas to becoming more renewable. We've got the Climate Action and Sustainability Plan drafted, thanks Darlon and for all the work you've done with that as well, Randy. And it's community education and our city infrastructure efficiency. So first, I envision a pilot project with the Arvada Community Garden with ASAC or the Sustainability in Action Committee. And nearby residents, residents produce compostables. The garden needs compost and ASAC can put, help put together that plan to educate everyone. If we really want to be more sustainable, we have to change the minds and educate folks on how to be sustainable. Make it fun, make it creative, make it innovative and show what happens and what grows when we are caring for our environment. With the infrastructure side, we need to modernize our outdated systems. Things like variable frequency drives, which are going to be able to run at less than 100% are going to get us even closer to thank saving on our energy, to lowering emissions. And that's all going to get us ready for the future potential of renewables. We need to have our core system ready for that and add a lower energy need so that we can do things like solar.
All right. So the most immediate thing that we can do is increase education. Tell people, teach people what they can do to actually contribute to the solution. Trying to affect driving habits, trying to affect when people are going. Make, I, I bet you there are a lot of people, most people that still don't know that, don't go do one errand and come home and then the next, and then the next. I mean, very simple things that I'm sure a lot of people in this room already practice. We're really talking about the most immediate. Two years is not, well, it's not quite two years, but I think in 2026, we'll have some hope to maybe start to reverse some of the cascade of incorrect, wrong things that have happened at the federal level. So hopefully we can start to realize better, better grant opportunities. The public-private partnerships, they're amazing. We can, as, as each one of these guys has alluded to, gals and guys, has alluded to the, the public-private partnerships, that, I mean, I love your idea about the lights. I mean, that's amazing. And you know, each one of your lights, when you've got a problem within your district, I have been told in the past that it's, you call your city council person first. Because I know that I've had those, those have been a lot of, lot of problems for me as well. We just, we need to educate ourselves and educate as many people as we can. So, thank you.
Randy will be next to start first. And this question is an infrastructure question somewhat. Arvada is having a continuing issue with prolonged Excel power outages. How can Arvada partner with Excel to mitigate this?
Great question. We do have a person, the representative from Excel that works with our city. And of course, that's where we need to start. I think though is the time for us to look at renegotiating our contract with Excel and putting in some stricter requirements that we as a community want to see changed. And we have the opportunity where we renegotiate that contract. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that opportunity to do that with Excel. But I would say, you know, what I have found for the immediate right now, I have found that when people do have problems with Excel, contacting me or city council person, if they're responsive and getting that into our city so that that can go to the representative, that, that does help. And we've been able to resolve some of those problems now. But obviously, we need to be doing more and putting more pressure on them. And I think renegotiating that contract can help us do that where we can have more power.
Um, I've been personally affected by that. My power went out three times in two weeks. And so, yeah, been noticing that for sure. And it was back on under an hour and I did call and immediately Excel did pick up and I was able to get information. My husband gets the notifications and he got those and it was, it was less than, less time it took them than, than they said. So I do think having a company like Excel or someone bigger who has that opportunity and ability to be connecting with us as residents and saying, hey, here's what's going on. Here's what you can expect. Don't worry, your vegetables and your meats and everything are not going to defrost. But we need to ask why? Why is this happening? Is it the Excel side of things? Is it out, something's out of date? We know that we are flammable here and that electricity can start a fire. So I think it's, it's looking at that too and making sure that we are doing everything we can to set ourselves up so that this isn't happening. And if it is, it's, it's, you know, safe for our environment. So yeah, really asking the question why and like Randy said, maybe holding more accountability, knowing that, that this is happening and being very clear, tying those strings to what we expect of Excel and, and what we can show you as city council, what you can expect from us.
I would love to know where the person is from because I will say I live in Old Town, right in Old Town. And we have a giant infrastructure issue with all of the old poles. There are trucks that are coming down the alleys. They run into the poles. Our power will go out. The poles are leaning. I can't believe they haven't fallen over and started any kind of fires. So it is absolutely, at least in my area, it is absolutely an infrastructure problem. And one of the things that I know that I've had to do is call them over and over and over. I had a problem where my power actually got cut and they wouldn't come out. They brought out three different engineers and then tried to say that we did something. Then the, 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 the HoSho even came out, shut down work all over the area, saying that somebody in our, it's, this seems to be an Excel problem. They are very slow with taking care of these problems right now. I know that they're working street by street and then they leap some streets and then they go back some streets. So I believe as city council, we got to put pressure on them. We just continue to pressure these guys because they're working way too slow and it, it's not just a problem. It's, it's also a safety issue.
Thank you. So I think it was probably about mid-May. I was supposed to be working with a buddy of mine. I was helping to fix his car and he was coming over to the house and the power went out this year. And we thought, well, it would flicker and come back on and it didn't. It was out for like eight hours. It was a very long outage. My buddy who was coming over said, well, let's just work on it at his house because he has solar and a battery backup. And he was the only house on his block that had the lights on. And so folks came over, were out the driveway and said, hey, what's going on? Battery backup. Now Dan bought that system probably about four or five years ago and it hasn't been used until this recent time. But that has happened three additional times just in the last couple of months. And so Dan's $40,000 lease agreement now seems pretty smart. The reason I'm telling you this story is because in addition to looking forward to working with Randy and other council members on renegotiating our deal with Excel, I would like to get in the room with Excel and have a conversation about our climate action sustainability plan that Darlon mentioned. See if we can get them to sign on to it because there are really specific things in that plan that speak to electricity and how we get power and how we use it. So I would absolutely support that and look forward to that opportunity. I think the sustainability plan that we have is absolutely critical and I look forward to supporting it 100%. Thank you.
Okay. Rebecca will be first this time. And this is about housing affordability and diversity. It's a long one. Our housing need assessment shows Arvada is woefully lacking in diversity of home types that would produce natural affordability for both renters and homeowners. What would you do to increase the number and diversity of homes across all of Arvada to increase affordability?
As city council, that's something we can directly affect with zoning. So it would be the multi-use zoning. And looking ahead also over to District 4, how do we make it so that we can have more housing? But also, we're using less cars. We're tying sustainability into that. We need to be developing, but how do we do that really mindfully? How do we do that in a way that provides, you know, if we have the multi, multi-use zoning, then work or the restaurant or the park is going to be in the same area that homes are. So by already bringing those closer together, we're going to be able to, to make that possible. And then the other thing with housing is programming. We have opportunities with affordable housing and, and that applies not only to renters but to homeowners. But how much do the folks that need that know what the steps they need to take? How do we make that as easy as possible to get the housing you need at a lower cost and, and take out a lot of the steps? So you're able to just do that application and then head to work where you're probably going or taking care of the kids. So I, I see it as not only the housing, but also how do we educate and, and share those resources with the community so it's as easy as possible to get that your housing needs met?
Could you please repeat that question for me?
Our housing need assessment shows Arvada is woefully lacking in diversity of home types that would, that would or could produce natural affordability for both renters and homeowners. What would you do to increase the number of and diversity of homes across all of Arvada to increase affordability?
Okay. So one of the things that a lot of folks around the city, we want affordable housing. But we run into the problem of we want affordable housing over there or over there. I don't want it right here. Get it out of my neighborhood. We, we have to build in the right place and we have to build up. We can't. We can't build out. I respect green spaces. I want to maintain as many green spaces as we possibly can. That goes for the affordable, that goes for some of the affordability side of it. And we've got to house our people, obviously. We can't have, I mean, it's a basic human dignity to have a house over your head to make you want to go to work, to make you want to live a more productive life. But our zoning, we are not going back to boarding houses ever. I know that's not going to happen. But that, we have to have some type of solution of smaller homes. Mike was talking about this, and he talked about the tap fees. If a home builder can make, I don't know, $350 a square foot off of a house, they want to build the biggest possible house they can. Okay, fine, build the biggest possible house that you can, and then make it five units. We only want one taffy, let's only do one taffy so we can create a diversity of housing like you, like the question asked.
Thank you. All right. Thinking about this. So why is housing so expensive? It has to do with tap fees, it has to do with the type of homes that we're building. There's the places that we're building homes, there's the contention between the communities that feel compatibility is not being met when we put high density in single-family detached neighborhoods. I think if we're wanting to address this issue, we have to look at how to get missing middle into the neighborhoods that are currently resisting or pushing back against the increase in density. But we're going to have to do that by bringing them along with us. And we have to push the residents and say, look, tell us the issue. Is it traffic? Is it, are we hurting a view? Okay, if we're hurting a view, let's talk about that because you don't own that property. If we're hurting what makes Yavada Yavada, let's dissect that a little bit because I think all of us make Yavada Yavada. So I don't think that's a valid argument either. The wide open spaces are still going to be a part of Yavada's fabric, no matter what we build. We only have about 18,000 residents to add to the city before we run out of our water resources. So if we're only going to be building a couple thousand, 10,000 additional units, we need to think very carefully and rigorously about what type of housing units we're building, and if they help us fill in the gaps that we currently have. Thank you.
I appreciate all the comments so far. I think I agree with most of what's been said. And then what I would add is, we have a great opportunity because we're going to be revising our comp plan. And that's going to be happening coming up in 2026. And these are the conversations we need to be having when we do that. Because from the comp plan comes the land development codes and the zoning. And so I'm excited and I'm really invested in making sure that we have a robust community engagement process when we revise that comp plan. And then we are talking about affordability as one of the main and primary topics. I think looking at our homeless strategic plan, there's a lot of great strategies that that advisory committee and our staff have worked on to put in that plan. We've implemented some of those, and we need to be doing more. For example, like actually purchasing and providing land to these developments that we want to have happen. We talked about water tap fees. We are using money, grant money, different sources of money. We have to cover those for these new projects. And then having exemptions for property and sales tax. All those things can create better incentives for the types of missing middle type of development that we're looking for. And then obviously, we need to continue to work with our state legislature. This past year, I think they took a good first step at addressing construction defect laws, which is one of the main barriers we hear time and time again, of why we don't have condos and townhomes, which are for those starting families. And so we need to continue to look at that, see how effective that law is or will be, and see that we need to change it and add to it. So that's, those are the things that I would start with. And certainly, there's more to do, but run out of time.
Right, and if I lost out here.
And you have 10 minutes left.
Okay, so very quickly, Rebecca will go first this next time. What can city council do to support immigrant communities?
All right, so for how we can support local immigrant communities, the first thing is breaking the stigma around it. Immigrants are not scapegoats, they are workers, they are not criminals. And as a community, we need to recognize that, and we need to be there for our community. The other area I've heard is, let's get high schoolers involved, let's get people involved, let's get people wearing buttons, let's get people sending out the cards that we have. So the people that need the information are getting the information, and they know that the community they live in is behind them. With that said, immigration, immigrants, we're built on that. That's what we are as a country. So a little ironic, in my opinion, that we're doing that. But immigrants, they contribute to the economy, not only with jobs but with culture. It makes us not a melting pot, because then you have to change who you are, but more of a salad. You get to be a tomato or a cucumber or lettuce. You get to be who you are and make something amazing together. So really building that within our community. And I think the other thing would be that hotline card. So really making sure we're providing what immigrants need so they know that the community is behind them, we are here for you, and here's the steps you can take, here's what you can say, and here's what you don't have to say anything about.
All right, so we often hear immigrants built this country, immigrants built this country. We're all descendants of immigrants, most of us. There are people that were here before us, as we all know, there are natives. Immigrants didn't just build this country, they're still the ones building this country. They're still the ones out there doing all of the, doing so much work that a lot of folks just aren't willing to do anymore. I actually have a story of one of my dear friends, his name is Julio. Julio, I've worked with Julio in one of the businesses that I do for the past five years. Julio has been a resident, not quite a resident. Julio has lived in the United States for 27 years. Julio has a wife who is fully naturalized. Julio has three kids, all, two of them under the age of 12, one of them's 18. Julio has a driver's license, he has all his business licenses. He has, his van is, it's fully registered, he's got his insurance. 10 days ago, Julio was picked up by ICE. Julio is now in the ICE detention center out in Aurora. And lucky for Julio, he knows us because we, Julio is working with me, and we've got three other attorneys. We are going out there, we're visiting him, his wife, his family can only see him through glass, but at least his attorneys get to see him face to face. This, this isn't the criminals. Julio has never been arrested for anything. He's not the criminal we're talking about, we hear, it's only the criminals. I am for the immigrants living here, working here, playing here, and being part of our community. I know I went over, but I'm a little passionate about that.
Okay, so as we've heard from the other folks up here, the candidates, I would second that we're a nation of immigrants. But I would add that I think we're a city of transplants. So Yavada certainly has grown a lot over the last 30, 40 years, to the point where most of us were not here at that point. There's a couple that have been around for a very long time, and we're honored to have some of them here today. But I wanted to bring up that point, and I also wanted to ask if anybody happened to go ice skating in the ice rink in Old Town? Couple of you, we'll get more this year, you know, promise me that. So the ice rink is a project that I took on a couple of years ago with some of my colleagues with the Business Improvement District in Old Town. And we were having trouble building it because we couldn't afford to rent it. It was about $70,000, if you can believe that. So I took it upon myself to design a new way to build it. And we went out there and tried to construct it, Joe and Pete Kuzor and a couple of us. We spent a month trying to get that thing off the ground, and we really couldn't do it. I have a couple of friends that work in the nursery industry, Jose and Oscar. They both immigrated from Venezuela and Mexico about five, six years ago. And I was telling them about this ice rink that I was having issues with. And they said, well, we could probably build that. Being a little nervous, I said, well, it can't be worse than last year. They finished it in four days. It was actually straight and flat, that's why I was asking if anybody got to experience it this last year. And then when they tore it down, it only took them a day. So that was like six weeks of my time and Joe's and the rest of the BID. And Jose and Oscar just got out there and killed it. So I think making space and appreciating that we're all immigrants to the new folks that just got here and saying, that's what America's about, that's what Yavada is about. Thank you.
Immigrants are such a part of our community. And I actually, fresh out of college, I went to Albuquerque, New Mexico, and I was a youth director for immigrants. And, you know, one of the things that I took to heart was, these are people just like my family back home in Indiana that work hard, they raise their kids, they're members of the community. And I think, you know, one of the first and foremost things we can do as a city council and we as a community at large is fight against the dehumanization of others like immigrants. And so that, to me, is first and foremost. We can also be supporting organizations that are providing resources. We have a community block grant fund that we put out every year to organizations that are doing services in our community. Let's prioritize where those funds are going and make sure that they're helping those organizations that are working with immigrants. And then I think the last thing I'll say is to make sure we are enforcing our state and local laws when it comes to law officers and what their activity is in our community, making sure that they are showing ID when they are showing up and saying that they're there at law enforcement. We need to see ID, and we need to make sure that they're following our other laws and that we have established. And I think that for the state of Colorado, we're stronger than some other states, so we need to make sure we uphold those.
Right, that is all the time we have for questions from the audience. I want to thank the candidates for giving us their time today and also all the time they took to answer the questionnaire that we sent to you, which was nine or 10 questions. And those were pretty detailed, those will be on our website, yavadastrompressiveaction.org. You'll see all of the answers. And if we get the candidates, they will also be sent those questions, so check in periodically. But educate yourselves on where people stand. We have lots of questions, but we're only in chat. So what I'm going to do is just type up these questions that weren't asked and send it to all the candidates, and maybe they can include that on their website. And you can see their website addresses on yavadastrompressiveaction.org as well. So we will be, like we said earlier, we will be sending an endorsement survey to our voting members in the next two weeks. And it will be basically should we endorse this person, yes, no, or not. And you can weigh in on that. If you are marked as voting member in our database, we will get surveyed. If you are not marked as a member, which basically means we'll bring with, out of our mission statement, you will get information about how to get that changed if you want to be a voting member. So thank you all for coming. I really appreciate all the civic engagements. And it sometimes is quite a lot, put one of these forms on together. And when I see all the people here wanting to know about our city government and that, it's a lot worth it. So Ben, you're going to be the candidate? I'd like to stay around for a little bit and greet each other and the candidates if they...